Good evening. This is the start of the Board of Directors meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd. I'm starting the meeting because both the mayor and the vice mayor are not here. And I shall ask from amongst the Board of Directors to appoint a director to lead the meeting.
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint Director Kevin Settle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Tonight's meetings will start. I appreciate the board letting me do this. We'll get rolling. Before we begin, we'll start with invocation and the pledge allegiance tonight. We'll start with Director Neil Martin will do the invocation, I'll do the pledge allegiance. Please rise.
Let's pray. Father, we are so thankful to be here tonight. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to vote, to come to decisions on the future of our city. So, Father, I pray for wisdom for this board. I pray that you would use us mightily to do that, to move the city forward. Lord, I thank you for those that are in the audience. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom as well as they come to speak to the board. I'm thankful for those folks that are here, Lord. And I just pray for peace. I pray for unity amongst this group here and unity amongst our city. And we pray for blessing for the city of Fort Smith. We ask you for blessing on the city of Fort Smith. We ask all these things in your name, Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Neil. To the city clerk, please call the roll.
Directors Rego, Good.
Here.
Morton.
Here.
George Kitzavas.
Here.
Christina Kitzavas.
Here.
Settle.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
We have a quorum tonight. Thank you very much. To the board members, any presentation on tonight's agenda you want to add to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to approval of the October 8th irregular meeting minutes. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We'll go to item number one. Item number one, before we do it, reminder that everything we do has a motion and a second. Any public comment needs to stay on pertaining to those comments tonight. With that, we'll go to item number one. City Administrator Carl Giffen. Carl?
Thank you, Director Settle. Item one on this evening's agenda is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to apply for and accept grant funding for the Community Noise Mitigation Program through the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. And our grants manager, Chris Hoover, will speak to this and answer any questions.
Good evening. Before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to submit a grant application to the Community Noise Mitigation Grant Program through the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. This is the first year for this competitive grant program and has been designed to help communities impacted by military fixed wing aviation noise. Eligible facilities must be within the predetermined eligible project zone as designated by the U.S. Department of Defense and the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. Projects will be located at Orr and Cornell Elementary Schools. Eligible proposers which the city qualifies as may serve as a pass-through entity for a sub-recipient which the Fort Smith School District will be. This program requires a 10% match which will be paid by the Fort Smith School District. I stand pending any questions from the board.
Thank you very much. What questions after citizens' comment? Thank you, Chris. To the city clerk, any citizen signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have just one. Dan Williams.
Mr. Williams, you have two minutes. Please address the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you this evening. I really appreciate it. I have good news for y'all. Help is on the way. There is movement in Fort Smith, Arkansas to help this board out. I do have a confession. I'm not excited about the city administrator having this authority. I think he should be gone and be replaced immediately. I believe that our school shouldn't spend 10% of its funds or 10% of its matching funds to have this until we get someone else in place that actually can do the job and have citizens feel confident about that job. I'm not here standing by my own authority. I do have a scripture I'd like to read to you. Proverbs 16, "A man's heart divizes his ways, but the Lord directs his path." And I believe that there's things that every time I come, I hear there's a weight imbalance. I hear people's words, and I believe that within hearing those words, there is reason to have suspicions, not just in this place, but through a lot of the things that are happening in the city. And I believe God is revealing those. And so, I have great hope, and I'm thankful citizens are getting involved. I'm grateful that there's a movement to actually see change, to help the citizens, to help people understand that there really is someone who cares about them, even though it doesn't feel like it a lot of times in the leadership. And so, I come confidently asking the board to consider not giving him the approval and finding a replacement, someone else that can do the job better and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. To the city clerk, anybody else signed up?
That's all.
All right, to the board, we need a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Second.
There's motion, second. Directors, comments, any comments or questions? Director Christina Kitzavas, I'll go with you first.
Mr. Hoover, can you tell me how these two schools were specifically chosen?
Yes, ma'am. So, the Department of Defense and the local defense, Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. I can, I'm going to ask Ms. Rice if she can help me out on this answer. They have to be, the eligible project facility or area must be within one mile of the installation and also be within the 65 decibel or greater contour lines. And so, that's why they were chosen.
So, these are the schools with the biggest impact with the noise?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, you said this was the first year that this grant was available?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
So, and I believe we had a comment somewhere in the materials about going for the noise mitigation grant for residences basically in 2025. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I know people have said to me that's important, and I'm glad to know that we're going to do that. I'm sure we'll have to look, it'll be a lot of work because we'll have to look at which houses are in the mitigation zones and kind of an estimate of the cost, so.
Yes, sir. And Director Morton, I will say that, like I said, this is the first year for this grant. Looking at the notice of voting opportunity, it is very complex. If we were, in order to submit for an application for residences to be eligible for this funding, there is a lot that we have to go through, and it's literally going to take us developing a process and a good chunk of time in order to dedicate to that. We have to have property surveys. We have to have pre-acoustical sound testing within the residences. We have to have agreements from the property owners. There is a lot, we have to have engineering firms to go in and kind of do design work. So, there's a lot to this.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so I understand it's a lot of work, but we have a year in theory to do it or at least several months.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, I would say that if we get into this and we have to hire outside professional help to determine this, I mean, there are firms that do this work, and we should do that because we need to make sure that the citizens have this money available to, who live in this zone, to do the noise mitigation.
Absolutely. And I'll say that we have developed a lot of relationships along the way in this process, so that'll definitely help us moving forward.
Okay, very good. That's all I have.
Director Morton?
I've got a question for Director Morton real quick because you'd mentioned something about seeing in the material that the information for residential. I didn't see that anywhere. Did I miss it? Did that come via an email or something?
I think it was an email.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, that makes sense. I remember when Director Good and I were here for an F-35, I think it was the noise contours. There was a lot of citizens there that expressed frustration.
Yes.
And primarily, one of the things that I heard is, and I don't necessarily have a problem with this, but what I heard was frustration that the city hadn't moved forward with the residential component of noise mitigation. So, I think that's an important thing for us to do. I think the folks are still going to be frustrated that we're, you know, the mission's getting ready to start, and we're not even, we're a year out before we even start putting things together so we can submit for that. So, I would say we need to move swiftly on the residential component of this. I know there's going to be a lot to it.
Yes.
We need to move swiftly because those folks are going to be impacted significantly. So, I would ask you and I'd ask administration to push on that as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. And one thing I will say is this program, you know, they only allotted, Congress only allotted $75 million for this grant program. $56 million of that is for communities within active bases, and only $18 million is for communities that are within reserve or guard bases. And so, by putting forth what we hope is a successful application for the school district, we can then apply for funds in the next cycle, and that will show the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation and the Department of Defense that we know how to manage this grant and we are successful at it, and that'll make us look more favorable in order to impact an application next year.
So, what you're getting at, this is truly the first year.
Yes.
It's not the first year because we now apply because we'll have a base year. It truly is the first year.
This is the first year.
Okay.
And from what I've seen, there's no other grant program that has any type of noise mitigation funding like this.
Okay.
And so, I think this is more of a, I don't want to say test pilot because I think the funding's still going to be here, but I think this is also a way for us to advocate for other communities and for our community as well to our congressional delegation. And I think it's an opportunity for us to advocate to the state as well, saying, hey, you know, there's other communities that are affected by fixed noise military aviation, and we want to help.
Was our congressional delegation partly responsible for this?
I'm not sure, but I would assume that they would be in favor.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure they would do. All right, thank you.
Neil, you done? Director Christina Kitzavas?
Well, I would just like to say that in March, I sat in on the Military Community Council meeting, and some of these grants were discussed, and, you know, grants through this office, they're extremely hard to get. So, I think, you know, it's good we got this one, but as for the residential program, you know, we certainly need to manage expectations. There were communities there that had applied, you know, maybe five or six times before they got something. So, you know, I just want to make everyone aware of that.
Yes, and I will say, you know, we have received one grant from this office, this Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. And so, once you have one, it kind of segues for you to get more because we established that relationship and, you know, shows that we know how to effectively manage.
Yeah, it seems like when they were discussing it, I believe it was a city in Arizona, was it Luke? From Luke, Tucson, Luke Air Force Base, but they had applied quite a few times. And, you know, it seems like the criteria, the people judging it are very particular about how it's written. They like it written in a certain tone, and then once you kind of figure those things out, you know, you learn a little more each time.
Absolutely. And I will say, one of our consultants that helped us with this, Taryn Judd and Axel Lopez, they, you know, have been with the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. They're in the private sector now. So, in essence, we have kind of like an insider that's able to tell us, even though they're not with them now, to say, hey, this is what these folks are looking for, and this is what you need to put down or not include, include things on those lines. So, we have a strong application, and I'm very hopeful that we'll be awarded.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Director Neil Martin?
You have one question that I forgot. I did some research on the grant itself, looking at the requirements and stipulations associated. I didn't see anything of merit in terms of requirements, in terms of using these dollars. Is there anything that this board needs to be aware of or the people need to be aware of in terms of, once we get the money, specific ways that we have to spend it?
So, there are eligible, things that are eligible and things that are not eligible. Things that are eligible are things such as windows, doors, some caulking and roofing, things on those lines. It's not just a one-saw, okay, we're going to soundproof the entire school or the entire residence.
Okay.
So, it's very specific in what we can actually use the dollars for.
Okay, and it's only for sound mitigation, nothing else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? To the city clerk, do you need to read the title before you ask for a vote or get the vote? I asked the jury to call the vote.
Directors Good.
Yes.
Morton.
Yes.
George Kitzavas.
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll go to item number two. Carl?
Thank you, Director Settle. Second item on this evening's agenda is a resolution directing that all discussion of water or wastewater utility issues be conducted at the Board of Directors study session scheduled on the second Tuesday of each month. And I'll ask our deputy city administrator, Jeff Dingman, to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Giffen. As mentioned, the resolution attached in the packet was requested from the board as an ancillary part of the discussion related to the Utility Advisory Committee, whereby we would direct utility, water and sewer utility issues to the first study session of each month.
I make a motion that this be tabled. I'm definitely in favor of having a discussion on water, especially water issues, at the November 12th study session. But, I mean, I'd like to table this. Until we have that discussion and during that discussion, we can have a more fulsome discussion of the idea of having citizens versus not having citizens on this, and whether the board actually has the time to deal with this. Because when I look at the pending list and I know what else is coming down the road, the board, I'm not sure we can afford to give up an entire study session every month for the foreseeable future. So, I make a motion this be tabled for the time being, and then we can revisit this during the November 12th study session.
There's a motion for it to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to table and a second, and that takes precedence over any other further action. To the city clerk, call the roll for the table.
Directors Morton.
Yes.
George Kitzavas.
No.
Christina Kitzavas.
Yes.
Settle.
I'll go with it, yes.
Martin.
Repeat?
Martin.
No.
Good.
Yes.
Motion passes, four in favor and two opposed.
Is it too late for comments?
No, it's, you have a question, comment.
We need to, as soon as possible, get together as a board and figure out something on these water bills. Y'all know what's going on. Y'all know. Y'all know what the feedback we're getting. Bills doubled, tripled, so I don't want to wait. I mean, people need relief now. So, do y'all have any ideas on what we can do to address this before November 12th?
He's next.
We do have an open Tuesday next week. I mean.
Well, I'd like to comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Christina had.
Okay, go ahead.
Christina?
I just, when we had this discussion about the Utility Advisory Committee, I think I may not have been clear. I was not necessarily opposed to the committee. I just didn't like the way it was structured with, like, someone from each ward. I want to make sure if we have this, it's people that have relevant, you know, professional information. And if we have, you know, maybe two people from the same ward and someone, you know, not from another ward, that's fine. This isn't a ward-specific issue. The water issues affect the whole city. So, I wasn't specifically against the committee. I just wanted to make sure we're only looking for people based on their qualifications to contribute, not just saying, oh, we need somebody from, you know, Ward Three, so we've got to find somebody. But, you know, we may have two people in Ward Four that are qualified. Yeah, I just want to make sure if we're going to do this, it's beneficial where we've got qualified people. You know, I spoke to a gentleman. He may be here tonight. There he is, I see him. You know, he's done this as part of his profession for years and years. And, you know, he's someone that could contribute to a conversation, you know, about this. And so, that's really what I'm looking for versus like, let's just take someone from each ward. I wanted to clarify that, but I, you know, I agree, these are conversations we definitely need to have.
Levon?
Well, you know, and I agree with Director George Kitzavas that there is some urgency to this, but I also agree with what Director Christina Kitzavas said about making sure we have the right composition if we eventually go the way of a committee with citizens on it. But what I would say is that if I look back on the process we went through from December to July when we passed the rates, I think we all did what we thought was right. However, what has surfaced in the water bills is we didn't look deep enough into this because I think we were all rushed. We knew that the Water Department was losing money every single month, and it was continuing to accumulate. So, we felt some urgency and some pressure to pass rates, and we focused on the lower tiers, and I think it's certainly proper to focus on these at some level. But we did not focus on the fact that our upper tiers are extremely high rates. And I want more information. I want to know the break-even cost, which Director George Kitzavas has asked for before, and I've asked for, the break-even cost for delivering one CCF of water. And I want to know the tiers that are in cities around us, how they do their billing. And I mean, I'm open to including any cities in Central Arkansas Water and any others, except for cities like Conway, which supplements their, which runs their whole utility, including their cable television operation out of a nonprofit corporation called Conway Corporation. I don't think they're comparable to us, but all these other cities are. So, that's my thing. I don't want to make another move and effectively make the wrong move like we did the first time. I want to make sure we've got the information from the consultant and from the administration that we can all look at ahead of time and make an informed judgment. So, that's my position. That's why I want to, I mean, I think we ought to have the discussion at the November 12th meeting and take as much time as we need and get as much information beforehand as we can to make a decision. Now, the pressure is off a little bit because people are no longer watering their lawns, in theory, at least. The ones who got a big bill probably turned their water off that day. But, so, there's not as much urgency right now as there has been if we were talking about this in June, so.
Director George Kitzavas, before we go to item three?
Board, I'd like to make a motion to put this on next Tuesday's study session to discuss the water rates. Also, I'm asking Lance and Carl to bring us something to the board, some options.
We have that, and actually, we worked with Brent McDonald today, but it will take them a little time to work on that. We do have the figure. That's being finalized, and we'll have that tomorrow.
Can we?
I'll second that motion.
You second?
Well, if we're ready next week, I have no objection to that, I'd say. But I don't want to do it before we're ready. I don't want to waste time and get the wrong answer.
We won't have a rate structure ready, but we will have there. It takes time to go through all the data and reconfigure all of that.
You still want to discuss, I mean, we start the discussion, see where it starts next Tuesday, we can have it and see where we're in at.
Did I get a second on the motion?
Christina did for second. So, it'll be on next Tuesday's.
Well, I just want y'all to stay in the urgency of this because, I mean, this is bad for the people.
I mean, I had almost an $800 water bill. I understand the urgency.
You got what?
$767.
We'll call your director.
Like I said last.
Call your director.
Neil?
I think she said her director would not return her call.
That's accurate, yeah.
What ward do you live in?
Ward Four.
Okay, one, two, three.
It was, we'll see, it was unopposed. I didn't get a choice of who to vote for when I voted yesterday.
Thank you. I spoiled her when she was little, you can tell.
All right, Neil, before we go to item three, let's.
Well, just. Mr. Settle, I've asked to speak on this. You all have had, just to say, you've had a motion and a second, and then you've had this discussion. I've asked to speak on this.
It's been tabled, Mr. McCutcheon. It's up to the.
Can I pass out to the, can I pass out to the media and the board documents, please, that I want you to review by the time of the next study session to all six of you, which shows what Mr. Morton says absolutely false? And it shows, it shows quite frankly that our, that Mr. Giffen has given information to the board.
We'll take it in advisement, and we'll continue on. It's up to the board to decide.
Well, okay, let me. No one, false information, period.
Okay, wait, wait.
Mr. Morton, you said to a town hall.
Why is he, why does he have the floor?
Mr. McCutcheon, you're out of order, please. Thank you, thank you.
Read the email.
It got tabled, I appreciate it. If the board would please, can we, any other suggestion, can it wait till next Tuesday?
Well, I just, I wanted to move forward with these. I think that was what the people want to see. So, that's why I voted against tabling. I think it's incumbent on us to continue to pour time and effort into water and wastewater, not just water. Water's the immediate need, but wastewater is really important, especially from a long-term perspective for the city. So, and I'm kind of disappointed that we voted it down, but, you know, we'll talk Tuesday. I'm for talking Tuesday.
Sounds good. All right, we'll go to item number three. No, don't you put it on the table, and you put it on the agenda for next Tuesday, so that's where we go. Item number three?
Item number three on this evening's agenda is an ordinance amending the 2024 operating budget and authorizing the appropriation of funds from the unobligated general fund balance for spay and neuter vouchers. And Josh Bufink, our director, our manager of communications and public relations, will speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Giffen. Before you tonight is appropriation of $50,000 for the spay and neuter voucher program. On January 18th, the city of Fort Smith adopted a resolution establishing a voucher system for the spaying and neutering of cats and dogs for qualified residents. Since its inception, this program has been an overwhelming success. Over 1,700 animals have been sterilized since February, many of which also received rabies vaccinations and microchips. Three local veterinary clinics are currently actively participating in the program, and a couple more have recently shown interest. To maintain this vital service through the remainder of 2024, we're requesting an additional appropriation of $50,000. This funding will enable us to continue this program to serve our residents effectively and manage the stray animal population in Fort Smith. Approval of this appropriation will allow us to continue to provide this valuable resource. Approval of this appropriation will allow us to continue to provide this valuable resource, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, to the city clerk, any resident signed to speak on the item?
Yes, we have one, uh, Joe Elskin.
Mr. Elskin, you have two minutes to the board, thank you very much.
Sorry, um, I just wanted to speak for this because changing the culture takes time, and I, I feel strongly that continued funding could facilitate a change in the culture of owner responsibility to spay and neuter, neuter, it, it takes time for people to realize that this is what we have to do. And pet owners, you know, we're irrational about our pets, but we got to do what's good for the city. All right, so I stand for it.
Thank you, ma'am. I need a motion to adopt said ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Uh, any directors' comments? Director Morton?
Yeah, I have a question for Josh.
Yeah.
So, you, you mentioned there are three, um, say there are three local veterinary clinics, can you tell me who those are?
Yes, um, so we had four, one dropped out of the program, um, it was, uh, but right now, we currently have Fort Smith Veterinary Wellness and Urgent Care, we have Kitties and Canines, and we have Vetco, which is connected to Petco.
And I just wanted those three announced, so, so the citizens, everyone here, and anyone who's watching on television would, would know? Could you repeat those, please?
Yes, uh, Fort Smith Veterinary Wellness and Urgent Care, Kitties and Canines, and Vetco.
Okay, very good, uh, that, that's really all the questions I have, I just wanted people to know where, where they could go to get the vouchers.
George?
So you said we'd have 1,700 spay and neuters with the vouchers?
That's right.
Um, in what period of time would that take in place?
Since February, roughly February 1.
And that's how many months?
Oh, gosh, eight, nine, eight months.
1,700 in eight months?
Yeah.
Does that seem like a normal?
I mean, I, I don't really know, because I, I haven't examined other spay and neuter voucher programs, but that seems, uh, like a large amount to me, you know, and, and actually, most of those have gone through one clinic, so.
Who, who's doing the most spay and neuters?
Kitties and canines, yeah.
And who was the firm that dropped out of this?
Uh, it was Fort Smith Veterinary Clinic.
And they just said they don't want to do it?
Yeah, I think the, I think the entire process, they had, uh, maybe a dozen over the entire time, and so it wasn't worth the time it took to actually fill out the paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the other, Director Morton?
Um, Josh, so this, this would be, how much money have we appropriated so far?
One hundred and fifty thousand's been appropriated so far.
So this would, this would be $200,000?
Yes.
Um, how, I, I wasn't here last week, so I didn't get the budget, do we have dollars appropriated in the budget for 2025?
We have $150,000 appropriated right now, um, it would, it probably be wise to add to that, but, you know, that's up to you all, of course.
Do we have any, do we have any data around how much, or how many animals would need to be spayed and neutered for this to be success, I mean, are we gonna need a million dollars, two million?
I, I really don't know the answer to that question, um, but I would say that, uh, a lot, from what I've read, uh, within two to three years, you start to see, uh, results from a program like this.
I mean, we should be able to have data that shows this, whether it be from, on the police side, or whether it be on the animal haven side.
Yeah, I think everything that I have right now is anecdotal, I don't have hard data for you.
Okay, well, right, and I don't, I don't expect you to, at this point, but.
Neil?
Director Morton, uh, we do have representatives from the Kitties and Canines Clinic and the executive director, Gavon Hoover, who, did you have someone that you could speak to about that?
Oh, this, we've got our veterinarian at, at.
Yeah.
Uh, Kitties and Canines, I met her at, at a, at an event one night.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ashley Smith, I want to thank especially our, uh, city administrator and the rest of the board for the support that y'all have shown for this program, because I can personally tell you the impact that I have seen it already make, um, and like Josh said, you know, the, the real impact we'll see in probably three to five years, but right now, the impact I'm seeing is on the community members, I have seen so many people come in who could never have afforded this, and they're coming and they're bringing their pets, and now their pets are, you know, a healthier animal that is now out in our community. I've seen many people come forward with animals that they have found, they have rescued it themselves off the streets, and they are caring for this animal instead of taking it to our city shelter or leaving it on our streets because they can now afford to care for it and receive, you know, one of the more, you know, financially impacting things that these pets need, which is a spay and neuter surgery. And then I've also seen many people start to bring in stray cats through the TNR stuff, and we'll see in a few years the mass reduction in our stray population because of this. And so I just want to let y'all know that there is an impact that we're seeing, we may not have the data readily available, but I can tell you that there is an impact.
Dr. Ashley, let me ask you a question, in, in your professional, uh, opinion, in a town, in a city of 90,000 people, how many dogs and cats do you think are there? Like, my assumption is there probably some statistics, and I actually looked at them before, uh, as I was studying the packet, but how many animals per, let's say we've got 35,000 households?
Yeah.
How many animals would you say were in the city at this point?
I can't do that math in my head, but I can tell you that I think the most recent data has shown that there's usually about two to four pets per household.
Oh, wow.
Um, and that about, I believe the most recent data I saw is that 85% of households are pet, you know, that have pets that reside there.
Okay, so I mean, if we're looking at, golly, two to four, I mean, you're looking at, uh, if we have 35,000 households, that's at least 70,000.
Yeah.
At, at a bare minimum, 70,000 animals, um, and, and, you know, I, I think I've looked at the, the census data that showed, uh, you know, the income levels and things like that, and, um, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to gauge out how much would be needed in order to be able to, at, because at some point, we've, we as a board would, would ramp this thing down, like, we would, we would need to start working our way out, and, um, because we would, we would see the influx, and, and so I'm just trying to get an idea of what that, what that cost is.
Yeah.
Okay, Josh, do you have something?
Yeah, I've got a couple things, um, one is, is Gavon reminded me, um, that this is really only about 20% of the animals that they spay and neuter at, at their clinic, just their clinic, so that's still, they're, they're, they're performing this procedure quite often, so that's a lot of animals throughout the years. And then secondly, um, part of next year and part of my budget will be doing video series on things like the spay and neuter voucher program, so that we can show, uh, really showcase those, uh, people who have had success with the program, who are thankful for it, and hopefully get more people involved in the program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Director Morton?
Okay, I, in the beginning of this program, we, we discussed putting an income, uh, number on the qualification for the vouchers, and I think we decided in the initial period of time to not do that, just, just to get the program off the ground, but that's certainly something we could look at in the future.
Are we still in that right now, are we still on the income limits, okay?
Yeah, so, so that's something we could look at that would mitigate the cost in the future, I mean, people that, who can afford it should, you know, should, you know, pay their own money rather than the city, it really, the whole program is, was designed and thought about as going to, for low-income individuals who would never otherwise, as, as, uh, the, uh, our, our expert said, never otherwise get, um, a spay or neuter, so.
And it's also, Director Morton, it wasn't necessarily just to provide something for low income, it's to fix a problem that we had, which was, which was animals running loose non-stop in certain parts of the city.
Absolutely, 100%, and, and, you know, in my, you know, you see, I see a lot of animals, and, you know, I get the same feeds everyone else does, so you see some animals now that are running loose that look like drop-offs, but you see a lot of animals that people let out and they run off, and, you know, hopefully, I'd say, the vast majority of those are found uninjured and brought back home, people, you know, people should really pay attention to their animals when they let them out, outside, so, uh, and that would reduce the drop-offs, because occasionally you see that a, a, one of the, an animal's been let out the front door, gets hit by a car, and that's a sad situation for, for everyone, uh, and, uh, tragic for the animal, so, anyway.
Another further comment or questions, and the board will ask the city clerk to call the roll on item number three.
Directors George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, they'll go to item number four, Carl?
Thank you, Director Settle, item, the fourth item on this evening's agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with Goodwin &amp; Goodwin for the 2016 SSA remedial measures, sub basin P003, and, uh, our director of water utilities, Lance McAvoy, will speak to this and answer any questions.
Good evening, uh, this is a consent decree project which consisted of approximately 14,000 linear feet of sanitary sewer line and the size of pipe range from eight to 24 inches in diameter. Uh, the work that was done was done by open cut, pipe bursting, and cure-in-place pipe, or CIPP. Uh, the original contract was approved, um, by resolution R621 on January 19th, 2021. It was to be 330 days to complete. Uh, we actually issued the notice to proceed on April 26th, if you will remember right, 2021 was still the end of COVID, and we actually were asked to amend that notice to proceed, which we did, to May 11th of 2021. This meant that the new completion date would be May 7th, 2022. In April 2023, the project was nowhere near substantial completion. At that point in time, uh, utility management contacted Daly &amp; Woods to review our option to see if we needed to come to the board to terminate the project and call the surety bond. Uh, working with the surety bond holder, Goodwin &amp; Goodwin, so that they would get the project done, it began to move forward. However, in January of 2024, the project still was not completed. Uh, we actually met on that, on February 6th, 2024, and we were told it would take five weeks and $160,000. The reason I bring all this up is because we are just now coming to the end of this project, it was completed on September 1st, 2024, 24 weeks beyond the original five weeks, and the promise of 160,000 actually was 315,253.50. The project is completed, and Goodwin &amp; Goodwin is 572 dollars, days late in completing a consent decree project. Uh, due to liquidated damages, um, the final payment will be 221 dollars, 500, 221,589 dollars and 10 cents, meaning that this project did come in under budget. The two items that are related, which is this one and the next one, include the change order for some additional time that we agreed was allowed due to weather and other issues, and then deductive because they did come in under budget prior to the, um, liquidated damages, and with that, I will stand for questions.
I thank you, Lance, the city clerk, is anybody signed to speak on this item?
None indicating.
All right, to the board, we'll need a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on item number four, Levon?
Just doing the math, the liquidated damage is $250 per day, is that accurate?
That's correct, we actually did a smaller liquidated damage because we were still unknown what was going on with COVID.
Understand, so, i- is anyone from Goodwin &amp; Goodwin here, their company?
Not that I know of.
Okay, well, I mean, it's just curious to me, because I, I clearly remember the meeting where they stood up and said just exactly what you said about the remaining cost and the time, and I, you know, I, it would be, we're not going to get it, but it would be interesting to hear, and informative perhaps, to hear, uh, why they failed to complete what they told the entire board that they would do, uh, but it's finished and it came in under budget, so, uh, I'm happy it's over with, thank you.
Anybody else with comments or questions on item four? Saying none, we'll go to the roll, roll call for vote, city clerk, call the roll.
Directors Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, item five, I guess is a continuation of this?
Yes, it is declaring the project complete and authorizing the 221,589 dollar and 10 cent final payment.
Is there, uh, any citizen signed that's speak on this item?
None indicating.
To the board, need a motion to approve item number five?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any comments or questions from the board? Saying none, ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Directors Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Sherri, appreciate it, we'll go to item number six, Carl?
Thank you, Director Settle, the sixth item on this evening's agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Half Associates, Inc., that, to provide design and construction services for the 2016 remedial measures, sub basin P005 project, and again, Lance will speak to this and answer any questions.
So this is some additional design work that is needed, it will include six-inch, eight-inch, 10-inch, 18-inch, and 21-inch diameter pipe, and some manholes, about 101 of those, to be exact. Uh, the manholes will either be, um, remediated by replacement or repair, the pipe will be remediated either by replacement through open cut and pipe burst, or by using cure-in-place piping method. Um, this is a consent decree project, uh, this does include P005 areas that are not inside the basin 12, that is a separate project that is called out by the consent decree, um, but this is all kind of off to the side of it, and, um, the amount is 287,365 dollars. We would like to get this designed because we do have some additional plans already for this basin, and this is one that we do have some, uh, sanitary sewer overflows that occur, and we're trying to get those eliminated as quickly as possible, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Lance, to the city clerk, anybody signed to speak on this item?
None indicating.
Need a motion to approve item number six?
So moved.
Motion by?
Second.
Director Morton, second by Director Morton, any comments or questions, Director Morton?
Lance, just for, uh, the benefit of, of the board and for folks here, um, this is a remedial measures project, so, so kind of walk, walk us through how we get here, we, it didn't start with the SSA, uh, testing, and then, then move us forward. So, just so folks understand what the consent decree, the steps for the consent decree.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you for asking that, so the first thing we have to do is we have to assess the pipe, we have to determine the shape that the pipe's in, and that's the sanitary sewer assessment, we do that utilizing dye testing, where we pour a environmentally friendly dye in, and we see where it leaks out to make sure we're not having a, what we call a cross connection with a storm sewer, so we don't have those, um, we also do smoke testing, that tells us where there are cracks in sewer laterals that come in from homes and businesses, and then for the main lines, anything that is eight-inch or larger, we use a robot that has a camera on it that does CCTV, it takes the photos and video of it, and the nice thing about that is it also measures the distance, so if you look at a pipe and it has, in the middle of the pipe, 300-foot pipe, there's a defect that needs to be repaired, we're not replacing the whole pipe, we can go in and do a point repair for just that, so it saves money. So we do the assessment, we come up with.
And that's what's called the SSA.
The SSA, sanitary sewer assessment, after that, we come up with a remedial measures plan, that's where we actually have the scoring of all the pipe, and we say, this one is definitely going to be a point repair, this one may be open cut or CIPP depending upon, you know, different things, this is going to be a pipe burst, so it kind of lays out what our thought process is before it goes into design. This is design, so this is where we take the pipe that we know needs to be fixed, the engineers look at it using engineering judgment, they determine, okay, we said we were going to do open cut, but we can save money by doing CIPP, cure-in-place piping, and that's a better fix, or this pipe is in such bad shape, we do have to open cut, we have to dig it up and replace it, we do the design, once the design is done, we then come back to the board with, after we put it out for bid, the bid goes out for construction, we construct the project, which the board approves all of those, um, projects, and then when it is complete, that sub basin or that pipe is considered foot, uh, linear feet and manholes, or the number of manholes that we need to meet milestones for the consent decree.
But there's a, there's a component to that that has to go to the EPA.
So they get a copy of the. So, they get a copy of the SSA, initial SSA, then they get the SSA remedial measures plan. They do not approve the design and they do not approve the contracts. That is done locally, but the first two parts, they, they have that review and approval is actually the term-
And we have to, we can't move forward until we get their approval, is that correct?
In the consent decree, consent decree, it says we can move forward with design on the remedial measures. My biggest concern with that, that I have had and I have expressed that with EPA is if we do that and then they come back and say, no, we don't agree with your remedial measures plan and we've invested money on it. Money is a, is a resource, as everyone here on the board will understand, that I don't want to waste. So, we've asked them to expedite those. With the exception of one or two, they have done a very good job of getting that to us within three months to get back and, and get us going on the design.
So, how long does that normally take, just from, from SSA to-
So, we have actually, except for, what we have done in the past is we actually did in 15 through the 19 reports. So, 2015 through 2019 reports, we did the SSA, we submitted that information. So, 15, we submitted it in 16. 17, we submitted the remedial measures plan and then we began the design and the construction in 18 and it's supposed to be completed in 19. So, that was how it was laid out in the consent decree. What we have been able to do, for the most part since COVID, is we have actually been submitting the SSA and the remedial measures plan at the same time. That is to give us more time to get the work done and designed. I will be truthful with you, I don't know about the one from 24, being able to do that same sequence because of the amount of linear foot that we're having to go through and score. So, we do an initial score of the pipes fours and fives, or one through three depending. And then we go back and have it looked at again to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Right. So, so this one is the 2016 remedial measures. If we were on schedule, when would this have been completed?
2020.
Okay, so, right when 2019 hit is when we started having problems. That was, that was the flood and then 2020 was COVID. So, those two pretty significant events caused delay. So, we're a few years out from this. Okay, as we, as we go and talk about wastewater, those are some of the things that I want to make sure that we understand is what, what should it have been? Where are, what, when it should have been completed? When is it actually going to get completed? I think through communication with Carl, he made mention that all SSAs, so the sanitary sewer assessment, should be completed in 25. March is 25. So-
The report. The, the actual evaluation has to be done by, it's actually, you're getting ahead in the agenda and I appreciate that for you. That's actually going to be the next thing we talk about is the SSA work. But, originally it was supposed to be done in 22. So, we're running two years behind.
Two years behind. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Director Morton?
Okay, so this question, my curiosity is much to anything, but on page 57, there's a map of the city. What, what do the different colors mean? Are those basins or what, what is that we're looking at? Page 57?
Let me look that up. I apologize. I don't have that right here. So, yes, 57, yeah, 57 is the different sub basins. If you look at page 58, it will show the, the blue and that's surrounded by other sub basins in different colors.
Okay, very good. So, as, as I recall, from, for the years, to the extent it was applicable, for the years 2016, 17, 18, we were, we were on schedule with the EPA. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, the only thing that we did not meet for 2019 was there were about, I believe, two to four miles of cure-in-place piping and some manholes that we were unable to do. Part of that was because we, we had to reallocate our resources to flood recovery. The SSA requirements for 2019 were met. Everything except, like I said, it was just some linear feet and pipe and manholes that we missed due to having to reallocate. Had we not had the flood, we would have been in compliance all through 2019.
We were on track until the flood and you disclosed the, to them on a timely basis, as I recall from the documents, that we would not be on schedule in 2019. That's included in your report. It was filed at the end of March 2020.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Christina Kitzavas?
I just wanted, for the record, to be clear, it's 278,365 dollars. I believe you said 287,000.
I apologize, my dyslexia, but it is 278.
I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
Any other comments or questions on item number six? If not, ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Directors Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
We'll go to item number seven. Carl?
Thank you Director Settle. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one with RJN to provide engineering services for the 2024 sanitary sewer assessment project. And Lance will speak to this and answer any questions.
Thank you. So, I would like to get back to Director Martin's question about when this needs to be done. The sanitary sewer assessments have to be completed, pardon me, by the end of this year for us to, that, that's something that we have been really driving on. The report of those assessments are due the end of March 2025. While we were doing our due diligence and doing QC, because I asked staff, make sure we haven't missed anything, we found that we did miss some stuff that was originally out there. And so, we went back to RJN who has their team here, has their equipment here, and asked them what would it take to stay till the end of December and to assess the, the linear feet of pipe that's left and to also find some manholes that were not assessed and, and were kind of missing. When they looked at it, they came back with 582,962 dollars and 50 cents to complete this work. That is on par with what they have charged by linear feet and by manhole previously. And this will then allow us to be 100% complete on the initial sanitary sewer assessment and be in compliance with that aspect of the consent decree, albeit two years behind when they wanted it. We are done as the end of 24. That also allows us then to look at the exact number of fours and fives, linear feet, and the number of manholes that have to be rehabilitated to hammer in a better price estimate for the consent decree compliance. So, that's the other reason why this is so important. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you Lance. To the city clerk, anybody, any citizens wish to comment on this item?
None indicating.
To the board, need a motion, a second on a resolution?
Second.
Motion second. Comments? Director Christina Kitzavas?
So Lance, we agreed with the EPA and the DOJ to a certain amount of linear fee. Is it per month or per year?
Per year for construction. That, that's in the, what we are negotiating right now.
And that was, was it, what, 10 miles? What was it?
Yeah, it's roughly 50,000 feet a year.
Okay, so 10 miles a year. So, did we enter into that agreement without knowing exactly how many linear feet we needed to do? Is that what you were saying? Did I misunderstand?
No, for us to do our, our final calculation, so this is, this is part of what we had to do. We have a, a good estimate of what it is, but this will actually nail down, you know, you have your estimate and then you have, was still within what we were looking at. That's one of the reasons we looked at adding or requesting two additional years from the eight to the 10, is to ensure that we could actually get the work done.
So, about 10 miles a year is what we've agreed to. How many have we executed per year?
The 2015 SSA work, I, I can get that information to Mr. Gepkin. I would-
What about this year?
Again, that, we're still calculating that because we still have pay estimates coming in for the projects that we've let out. So, I'll get that where we're at right now.
You think we're on track?
Not for this year, no. But, we did not have that proposal from EPA and DOJ until August, September of this year. And we did put out the, several of the contracts. You'll remember the bundled contract that we unbundled and then brought those, I believe it was five different contracts to you. Those in themselves will meet the requirement if they're completed. And if you end up breaking that out over two years and they did 50% a year, we would be well on our way. I just want to get as much work done as we can to show that we are not resting on our laurels. We are moving forward.
And I believe those contracts have an end date of December 31st of this year. Is that correct?
2025. Because originally, we were going to have it the end of this year when we had the one big bundle.
Right.
And contractor came in and said, we can't do it in one year. We need two. So, we split it back out and that's when we did the individual contracts and put it as a two-year assignment. So, those will actually end. And that one, as well as several of the others that you have approved this year, are a December 31st, 2025.
So, I think that's why we couldn't get people to bid, right? Everyone thought that timetable was unattainable.
Uh, one, one contractor missed the deadline for bidding, for submitting a bid. They thought that they could obtain that. However, because they did not, it would have been one bid and it was such a high dollar amount, the board instructed us. And we actually looked at delivering by an alternate method than the bid. The board requested that we went and reopened the bid, split it out and reopen the bid.
Yeah, I remember. We saved about a million and a half dollars.
It's going to end up being about 250,000 when all is said and done because there were other projects that we broke out. Mr. Snodgrass is doing a, an overlay project that included some of that work that he's delivering for us that we will reimburse the engineering department on. So, when we added it up, it's maybe, it's going to be between 200, 250,000 and maybe a million tops, but it cost us a year's timeframe in getting it done.
Cause I remember when we were discussing that, you know, my thought was that maybe the contractor that was bidding on it was just building those fees in, knowing that they would go over. And I remember that was my fear because all the other contractors were saying it can't be done by the end of 24 and turns out it can't.
Again, that, if you give a contractor X amount of time and they feel that that's how much, you know, if they feel it's a doable timeframe, they'll, a lot of them, not all of them, but some will go to the, to the 11th hour to get it finished. Some will get it done earlier. We have one contractor who has, until the same deadline and he has informed us that if he can, he would like to have it done by the end of this year. I will never turn down a contractor getting a project done early. But, there's also weather delays. There's other things that, that factor into projects being done in a timely manner. And that's something that we had talked about is if we had weather delays, force measures could be filed for that and we would pass those force measures on to EPA and DOJ. And then that was something that we could go into, informal dispute resolution and formal dispute resolution, should we need to.
Do you feel like a lot of the people who are bidding on these contracts, working on these consent decree projects, are they continuing to bid?
Yes, the last, so we've had two bid openings in the last two months, last month and this month. We had one that bid in September that did not bid in the October and then we had one, I believe, in October that did not bid in, in the September. The other three have been consistent in submitting bids.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on item number seven? Seeing none, ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Directors Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
George Kitzavas?
Yes.
Christina Kitzavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
It's approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you Sherri, we'll go to item number eight. Carl?
Thank you Director Settle. The eighth item on this evening's agenda is a resolution accepting the bid of and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Royal Ridge Construction LLC for the 2016 SSA remedial measures sub basin S-007. And again Lance will speak to this and answer any questions. Also, our city attorney will speak on this item as well.
This project was actually opened on Oc- on October 11th. It is a consent decree project that consists of 3,794 linear feet of eight inch and 200 linear feet of 12 inch diameter sanitary sewer pipe that will be replaced by open cut method, 5,548 linear feet of eight inch sanitary sewer pipe that will be replaced by pipe bursting, and 2,331 feet of eight inch pipe and 300, 603 linear feet of 12 inch that will be cure-in-place piping. We will be installing 73 public cleanouts and replacing 27 manholes. We'll be lining 38 manholes and we will replace the rim and cover of 17. And I just want to kind of briefly explain that. You're driving down the road and it kind of dips. We're, we're trying to get the rim and the cover level with roads, with drives, things of that nature, so you don't have that pothole from the manhole. So, that's a rim and cover is what holds the cover there and raising it up. We received four bids for this, which I'm glad to see we're seeing more bids. Royal Ridge, Forest Green, Crawford, and Craft Reynolds all bid. The low bid for the project was Royal Ridge Construction who submitted a bid for 4,530,534 dollars. We did have McClellan Engineering, who was the design engineer, look at this and certify the bid tab. We actually talked with them the day we opened the bid tab to see if anything was missed and at that time, we were told no. Today, we did receive an email saying that they did have a Schreiber's air on that and with that, I will turn over, I had a talk on what to do about that with our legal group and I'll turn it over to Mr. Canfield to discuss.
The item before the board is a resolution to accept this bid and, and offer the contract to the low bidder. The low bidder today asserted a Scrivener's error on one item in the bid and asked for permission to withdraw their bid. In our opinion, the city should accept the bid, offer the contract, and that's sort of a prerequisite to being able to make a claim against the bid bond, basically a quarter of a million dollar claim and/or to consider whether to enforce the contract. And it will take some evaluation whether that should be done and the board will eventually direct how that proceeds. But, in order to commence that process, the board should accept the bid, is, is our opinion.
And Sherri, if the board wants to accept the Scrivener's error and still move forward, is that its option as well?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that we need to evaluate that in the context of the legal issues. But, yes, that, after that evaluation, those issues will be decided by the board.
To the board, do we want to let citizens comment or do you want to ask question? I mean-
Yeah, I, I, do we, do we know how much the Scrivener's error was that was reported?
It's, it, it explains only a, not a small, it explains only a portion of the difference in this bid and the next lowest bid. The difference is in the neighborhood of 4 million and the Scrivener's error that's asserted is a five or 600,000 dollar item.
Okay, okay. That's all I have for the moment.
Okay, let's go, let's stay, let's-
I'll have more later.
Let's stay on, let's stay on point to the city clerk. Any citizens comments or questions on this item?
Yes, we do have one. Ms. Jo Elsken?
Ms. Elsken, you have two minutes.
I just, because people don't get praised very often and I certainly don't praise people very often, I just wanted to say that any reasonable person living in the neighborhood that Royal Ridge is, is doing construction in, in our neighborhood, we should be very, very happy with them. They, they, they've made a difficult situation as, as easy as they could. There was an auction, a house auction, and they stopped and made it possible for that auction to happen. So, they're very considerate and, and the work they're doing is wonderful. So, good things.
Thank you. To the city board, I need a motion to approve item number eight?
I'm going to follow our city attorney's suggestion to make a motion to approve this, but I have substantial commentary afterward. I, I second because I want to have discussion.
That's, that sounds good. All right, Director Morton, would you like to go first? There's been a second, so we-
Okay. So, you know, my feeling on this is that, you know, if, if the number's 500, 600,000- Okay, so, you know, my feeling on this is that, you know, if, if the number's $500,000, the city, the city should always strive to treat contractors in the manner the city would want to be treated, and that is fairly. If, if it's, if, if it is an error that is shown and the city agrees it's, it's an error, then, then I think the city should take that into account in allowing a change order, if that's the appropriate process to go through, to adjust to whatever the amount is. It is not in our best interest to not treat a contractor fairly who's been honest with us and come to us with, with an error. And it's also not in our best interest to run contractors out of business at a point in time when we need contractors. So, that, that's, that's my commentary on that.
Any other director with comments, Director?
So, Jerry, do you mind kind of stepping up? And, and you, you said this opens us up for, for what? Maybe, I kind of, I kind of got lost there when, when you were, when you were talking about. This Scrivener's error opens us up for what?
Well, the contractor asserts that there is a sufficient Scrivener's error that the board should not accept their bid, that they should be allowed to withdraw their bid.
So, so if, let me stop you real quick. I think we got an email today that said that that error amounted to about half a million dollars.
Right, about $520,000.
$520,000. So, so they gave us a bid of $4.5 million, the next lowest bid was 8, 8.5, somewhere around there. 8.2. So we've got a pretty significant difference here between lowest and second lowest. I love low bids, but I, I kind of want to get to that. So we got $532,000, and they say, they say they want to pull it back. They don't want us to go with them. Is that correct?
Yes, they're asking to be able to withdraw their bid.
Is, is, are you here with, you moved up to the front. Are you here with Royal Ridge?
McClellan.
Okay, you're with McClellan. Okay, I might have to talk, I might have some conversation with you in just a second. The first thing that, that hit me in this was the difference in price. Um, you know, I think the citizens want a low price, but we want to make sure that it's a quality bid. I mean, all, the three through fi-, or, uh, two, three, and four bids were pretty much in line. This one stuck out. And so that gives me, that gives me some concern and pause. Now, I've asked for questions about the difference, I haven't gotten really anything that says there was anything material, but maybe that's what the guy from McClellan can, can provide. How were they $3.7 million, roughly 40 to 50% cheaper than the next highest bid? That, that is not, that doesn't happen often.
You're correct, and I looked at the certified bid tab, I actually had staff provide that to me to look at. When it comes to maintenance and traffic control, they were half of what the other bidders were.
What does that mean? You have people out there stop, stopping?
Making sure that the road closure notices go out, flaggers, making sure that it's properly signed.
Okay.
All of that.
And, and what was the total of that? Like, it, what, what was their bid there? You say they were half of, of everybody, everybody else?
$135,000.
Okay, so that's not that significant.
But when you start going through and adding up things, the site prep, they were $689, the next closest was $1095, which actually, two of the bidders had the same exact site prep, so they were below on that. Trench and excavation safety, this is one that gave me a very strong pause today. $23,400. The next closest was $208,000. And safety is very, very important to me. These are not my employees, but this is a project that the city is paying for, and I want everyone to go home safe. The one that they, they, another one that they had were the Scrivener's error, 206, 260,000. The next closest was 702.
If they had the Scrivener's error, there's $500 and somewhat thousand.
So it should have been $15,000 apiece, and they had $5,000 apiece.
Okay.
For unit price.
In terms of the unit price.
Yeah.
But that would have gotten them that $500,000.
That would have gotten them the $500. Pipe bursting was lower by about half for the 8-inch pipe bursting. It's just a lot of little things that add up. I will tell you one thing that we did, they have subs, just like everyone does, you don't have, there are very few construction contractors that can do everything, CIPP, pipe bursting, all of that. One of their subs that they listed, when we were doing our due diligence, to bring up to this, and, and we got the information today, because we've been trying to track it down, one of their subs does not have an Arkansas contract license, which means that they would not be able to do the work until they achieve that. I reached out to someone who is very knowledgeable in getting contractor license, and I was told that normally you can get that within a month.
Okay.
So, based on that, is it possible for someone who has a contractor license in Texas, which they do, to come into Arkansas and have a contractor license within a month? The answer is yes. And I, I trust this person implicitly, who gave me that information. So there are some, some additional things, again, we looked at it, I did get this information later this morning, sorry I didn't have a chance to share that with you, but it's just here and there, half, half of what the cost was, and then today, Andy with McClellan reached out to him and said, "Look, we're taking this to the board," and it was shortly after that that we received the email.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Let's keep going around the, around the room.
Director Christina Getzavis?
You know, I, I just don't like this, it just doesn't feel right to me. Doesn't feel like we have the information we need at this time to make a good decision. Uh, you know, in my own business, I wouldn't be making a decision like this with the information we have. I think we should table this. I mean, it's a consent decree project, I think we owe it to take a week or two and really review the material and really get it right.
So I was thinking the same thing Christina was, and since I can't make a motion, second. Jerry, if we table this, the bid still is good for 30 days, is that correct?
Yeah, whatever the bid documents say. 60 days.
60 days. So if we do table it to the next meeting, that gives ample time for Lance and Carl and the team to get more data, and the engineering team, is that correct?
Yes, the, the bid's good for 60 days.
Christine, is that what you're kind of thinking?
Yeah, I mean, so, they put in a bid, I understand they have an error, they're wanting out of the bidding process, and we're trying to hold them to the bid they put in, is that?
Yes.
Sum it up. You know, I mean, this is a local company, it's a small company, I, I don't feel like I accurately understand the circumstances around it, but they're, you know, about $3.5 million less than everybody else. I mean, is this a situation where we hold them to a bid and put them out of business?
Well, at the very least, accepting the bid puts you in line to make a claim against their bonding company, which is a insurance company. So I'm not sure why the board would not set up a potential claim against the bid bond.
I, I, I think I, I would still like to move forward with tabling this.
Okay. Director Morton had some questions, and we'll go back to you for the table motion.
Sure.
Levon?
Okay, so, I, I was going to raise, I was just going to ask, there is a, there is a, a bond on this, and Mr. Canfield's already answered that question. I guess, I would ask, I, I do have some questions for Mr. Hannah, I think, who, who is here from McClellan. So, there's a letter in our board packet that you signed that, that basically states that, that you did some investigation of whether this contractor does acceptable work, and you got back positive remarks, and your recommendation is that, that the bid be awarded to Royal Ridge. Now, you said you reviewed the bid as well, so in, in your review, do you see anything taking into account this, taking into account this Scrivener's error? Do you see any reason in the bid why this company didn't, didn't have the knowledge to do the bid? I mean, have you talked to them and to, about, about their bid, and what, if you did, what did they say?
Yeah, I spoke with Thomas Edgman, and I've worked with him before on previous projects, and I've never had any issues with him. He, he used to work with Steve Bean, and they, uh, let's see. When I called Thomas this morning, I asked him about the, the bids, the bid, and that's when he let me know about his Scrivener's error.
Okay.
And when he told me about it, it, um, my thoughts for a second.
No rush, take your time.
Yeah. When he was telling me about it, it, we, we calculated up how much it would be over, and it, you know, as you said, $500,000 to $600,000, and that put us 3 million, still 3 million under. And at the time, I didn't see, I, I don't know the legality of the side of things. I, I, personally, I didn't see any issue with them moving forward with it, and potentially, like you said, change order. But, again, like Jerry had said, we may have, they may have to move forward, but I'm with Christina, I, I think there should be additional discussion on it.
Well, of course, the problem with that is they now know the other people's bids. If they truly withdraw the bid, don't submit, we're kind of stuck with the other, with the higher, $3 million higher cost. That's why I'm inclined to say, well, if there's a Scrivener's error, and, you know, we accept that, it's, it's $5 million, and kind of take them at their, if they, if they believe the bid they submitted was an appropriate bid, and in your review of it, did you see anything obviously in, in error?
The, the point repair was the first one I noticed, which is the one that they called the Scrivener's error on. And when, two days after the bid opening, I had talked with Thomas and pointed that out to him, and he, at that time, he had said there was no issue with it.
Oh, really?
Until, until today.
Okay, so they've maintained, really, from the time that they bid, which, the bids were open October the 11th.
Correct.
So, now would the 60 days count from October the 11th, or?
Yes.
So, so that's basically sometime December. So there is time to, to think about this, and so perhaps we should table it and, and consider it further, but, you know, if this, this is a, you know, if this bid holds up under a review of, is it absolutely impossible to do this work for this, then, then I, I mean, I want us to, to consider going forward with it. Now, I will say that Royal Ridge is a company that was a subcontractor on the large contract that we rejected. And they came up and they argued in favor of us accepting that, that bid, and I think Vortex was the company that bid on the, doing the whole thing in an impossibly short period of time. And so, you know, they came to us and said, "We really want you to approve this," and now they've come to us with a bid, so, I mean, they, they, in theory, they have an experienced professional who prepared their bid, and they, they were one of the subcontractors, so they know what kind of work this is. I mean, it's not obvious to me that they're not qualified to do this. And, and absent that, you know, you kind of wonder about these other bids, knowing, knowing how busy these other contractors are, and whether those are, in fact, somewhat inflated because of the work that they're already underway with. Lance, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. To that point, I will let you know that the next lowest bidder was actually below the engineering estimate for this project. So.
Well, and we, well, we discussed in the past, and, and that it's very difficult to make an engineer's estimate today because of all the things that have changed in terms of delivery times and, and materials cost and, and other things. So I, I mean, you know, the fact that it was an $8.5 million or $8.3 million is what I wrote down when I talked to Mr. Hannah earlier. I, I, you know, engineering estimates are good at some point, but they're not as, it's not as easy to make one as it used to be, so.
Anything else, Levon?
No. Jeff, you have a comment on this item?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to make, just a comment that Jerry may elaborate on, but, you know, with the, with the spread and the bid numbers here, I mean, we went through a legitimate bidding process, and the city is entitled then to this lower bid, and so that is the purpose for the bid bond. I mean, when we go into a project like this, we have the bid bond that protects the city in this instance, and then that's in addition to whatever the construction bonding and everything that happens later. But that bid bond then protects us from, from this instance where we have a bidder that's a good amount lower than the other bidders, even, even if they had, you know, correctly, even if they weren't for the Scrivener's error, we had the, and had a $5 million bond, and that's still $3.2 million less. And, you know, if that, if that proves out to be the case, that they believe they can do that, do this work for the $5 million, and, you know, that, that's great. But Jerry's point is, and he can elaborate, is that, you know, accepting this bid then opens us to be able to have access to that bid bond if we need it, but then we still have the option to work with the low bidder to come to the correct price for, for the work, to get the work done. And it's still, in this instance, likely to be $3 million less than the next lowest bidder.
So, just to, to make sure we understand, what exactly is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be the same as Jerry's, is to accept the, this low bid, and then work to, I mean, because accepting the bid doesn't sign the contracts. And so you accept the bid, you work through the processes, you get a, an appropriate, appropriately assigned cost to a contract to do the work, then you consider approval of a contract for the correct amount.
I will say, it gives me great pause to hold someone to a contract that they want out of. That, you know, that they don't, that they've made an error on, or they don't feel like they can execute, and, you know, I'm always looking for ways to save the city money. And there's a lot of money, and I think it's enticing to say, you know, let's hold them to it, but I would just say it gives me great, great pause to do that.
And I would, I would say in response to that, I don't disagree, but that is the reason we require the bid bond.
So do we have a motion to table? Has that been?
I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Levon.
Okay, so this brings me back to something I've commented on before. I can recall a time when we had a $9 million bid on a new cell at the landfill, and we had an engineering estimate of 4.5, and we, we declined to accept the bid and asked for more information and an engineer, ex, an expert to look at it, and they came in and said it should be 4.5. So sometimes people bid really high, and the, the right answer is the lower number. So I want us to remember that. And I think that was before Director Christina Getzavis was on the board, but that is, that is something that we, that's, that five of us are aware of, that, that we went through. And we got it done for the $4.5 million engineering estimate, not the $9 million that was the bid. They came in at 4.5.
Yes, but the contractor was interested in wanting the work. I, I feel like that's, that's the difference here.
Levon, you got any comments or questions?
I, I'm finished, but, but I guess, you know, if, if we approve this, then we do have the time, as, as Deputy Administrator Dingman said, to go through this and with them and find out, you know, if we think they're capable of doing the work. Because I'm, I don't want to run them out of business. I, I feel the same way as you, Director Getzavis, but, but, but at the same time, you know, I feel we have an obligation to the people who live here to try to get all of our contracts for the lowest amount we can, if we think they can do the work. And we have, you know, both investigative work done by McClellan, as well as citizens' comment, and this company's been around, so, I mean, again, I don't want to run them out of business, but further discussions, I think, are warranted after the acceptance. And I don't, tabling, I don't know, I guess we have more time, so we could table it, have some discussions and take more time. So I guess, I mean, I could go either way.
I guess I think, like, you know, how much time, how much money is it going to take to look into the bid bond and pursue that, and, you know, I, I feel like we can just get it right the first time, instead of, you know, going down this road of uncertainty. going down this road of uncertainty.
Christina, do you have any other comments or questions? Since Neil's got a question. Okay, Director Martin?
So if we were to table, well, if we were to accept it and we worked with them, does anything come back to the board? The contract would, would come back to the board?
The change, the change order for the contract would have to come back to the board. Any change orders?
The change order would come back, okay.
So if it was a change order for the 400 and, or $520,000 would come back to the board for approval.
Okay. And that change order, knowing that we know it now, would that come before any work begins?
We could have that, I mean, we could have that as, as soon as we could. We could have that maybe by the next meeting or the week, meeting after. Depends on when the contract is actually executed and when the notice to proceed is given.
Okay, so we're kind of, we could, if we tabled, we could do the same thing, I guess, if, if...
It would be, it would still be a change order after, after execution of the contract. So the contract has to be executed before you can do a change order.
I'm, I'm, I would second, I think we've got a motion for a table.
Not yet. I'll call for it in a second.
Okay, because I'm going to second.
Okay, that's fine. I just, are you done, Director Martin?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions before we get Christina to make a motion? Only thing I want to say is more time's okay. I'd ask that this be brought back to the November 4th meeting, which is that Monday before the election. And I'd ask, maybe if you would ask the Royal Ridge to be here on site with your table motion. That's the only I'd ask for, because I think they need to answer some questions to this board. So Director Katsavas, if you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table until November 4th.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Motion second on the floor. With that, we'll ask the City Clerk to call the roll for the table.
Directors Morton?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Lance, appreciate it. Team, thanks Jerry for the information. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda. There's items A through K to this, let's first, any board members have any comments or questions on any of these items? Any comments or questions from the board on any?
G, H, and J.
What?
G, H, and J.
G, H, and J, okay.
F.
F from, okay. Andre, George, Christina, any questions? Okay.
And, and G, quick question on G.
G's already taken. City Clerk, is any comments or questions from the citizens first?
We only have Barry McCormick here on item 9J to answer questions.
Okay. All right, we'll go with this one. Carl, do you want to introduce most of these items before we, the directors have comments or questions?
Sure, I can call up Billy Butler, Deputy Director of Streets and Traffic Control, for item 9F, Resolution Authorizing the Acquisition of Real Property Interest for Sidewalk Construction on North 50th.
The question that I have is, is there connectivity here with this particular proposed sidewalk? Is there, are we connecting to another sidewalk or is it just going to be a sidewalk just sitting all by itself?
This sidewalk will connect all the way from Kelly Highway to Midland.
Okay, so there's existing sidewalks already there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on F? Director Good?
I'd just like to comment on that sidewalk, just to give you, and I, I know you've been on the north side of town, but it's between Kelly Highway and Midland Boulevard, two highways. You have two schools in between. There's a partial sidewalk on the east side near Sutton.
Of 50th?
Of 50th.
Okay, so there's one on the other side, okay.
And one on the west, but it's not complete on the east.
Okay.
I agree. You're doing sidewalk construction there, it looks good, so it needs to be done. Thank you very much. Item 9G, it's a resolution authorizing acquisition of waterline easements in connection with Lake Fort Smith Water Transmission Line Phase III. And Lance McAvoy will answer your questions.
I just had a quick question on this one, Lance. So this was for Phase III.
Yes.
Phase I is complete.
Correct.
Could you tell me about Phase II?
Phase II is undergoing environmental, the NEPA. And once that is done, we will be applying for the $12 million of congressionally directed spending that we were granted. And we will begin bidding out that portion of what would be affordable. It'll be about $15 million total for that.
For Phase II?
For Phase II. It will not fix all of Phase II, but we've been able to look at breaking that up into four separate segments to make it more fun, make it affordable in the funding, so we're not having to come up with, oh, we had it broken up in two segments and it was going to be about 28 to 30 million.
And just, just for everybody's benefit, this, this, this project is replacing our current 24-inch...
Seven.
27-inch water transmission line from Lake Fort Smith down to Fort Smith, and it's 100 years old, is that correct?
Yeah, it was built, well, it was built in 1929, I believe is when it was completed.
So this would be upsizing to a 48-inch pipe coming down, delivering water to the city?
Correct.
And replacing a 100-year-old pipe?
Yes.
Okay. This is our primary drinking water source?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Levon?
Okay, my question was, you say in, in your materials that Phase I is complete. How many miles is Phase I approximately?
I believe it's six.
Six miles and Phase II is going to be?
I, I have that on a chart that's hanging in my office. I don't have it memorized.
Okay, Phase III that we're talking about here, how many miles is that?
Same, same thing.
Okay.
I apologize, I will get that information to Mr. Gepkin to get out tomorrow.
Thank you.
I thought it was 10. I thought this, this component here was 10.
It may be, I may have had it in.
Did it say, did it say that somewhere?
I thought it said that somewhere. I don't, I just...
It's 9.9 miles. I apologize. Thank you, I did have that.
Well, I was primarily interested in Phase, in Phase I, but that's good information on, on that, so that's all I have.
Any other questions on G? We'll go to H.
Item 9H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number Three with half an associate to provide engineering services for the Highway 255 18-inch waterline relocation project.
Lance?
Okay.
Levon?
My question on this is the reimbursement was 67.51%. I didn't really understand. I mean, typically it's 100% or 90% or something like that, so what, what's this, this percentage?
So some of our pipe work predates easements being issued, and we did not have an easement where the pipe work was put in. This was put in and maintained prior to or during World War II, when we were just trying to supply water to Chaffee. So because it is not one of our easements and it is considered in the RDOT's right-of-way, we need to move it. And because, again, we did not have the easement to begin with, we are being charged. They, they will not reimburse it. They only reimburse if we are moving it because they are expanding their right-of-way and they're taking over our easement.
Okay, very good, I understand.
All right, no other questions on H? We'll go to J.
Item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hawkins. We are engineers to provide engineering services associated with the Arkansas State Highway 22 Utility Relocation Project.
Lance?
Okay, my question on this was the difficulty of trying to do relocation on Rogers Avenue. But I recognize that for most, a lot of the property on Rogers Avenue, the parking lot actually faces the street. Now, is it on the, what I'll describe as the Mercy side or is it the other side?
Yes. We have, we have it on both sides.
Okay, so there's a lot of work there, right? And we do get, what's the reimbursement on this?
I believe this will be 100%. We're, we're still working on getting the paperwork signed.
The ballpark on the cost?
I'm going to ask Barry if he's here. Again, engineer estimate, so I'm going to pull up the J.
Barry McCormick, Hawkins, we're, we do not have an estimate yet. The, and I think you alluded to the difficulties in utility relocations. The project runs from just west of Waldron Road down to the west side of the 540 interchange there, then it picks back up there in front of Starbucks and all, goes down to the hospital, basically on 74th Street. Because of that difficulty and trying to find a corridor for all these utility relocations, the initial engineering service agreement is to do route study and figure out where we're going to go.
Okay.
And, I mean, Eddie, you make a good point. I mean, obviously if the util, or if the RDOT is expanding the roadway, they're also expanding drainage improvements along Rogers. And anytime they dig up and install drains, that we have potential conflict with utilities.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Neil?
Mr. McCormick, so I asked Carl this the other day when I was going through the, when I was studying for the agenda, and I observed it tonight. If they're widening 20 feet on both sides of Rogers, that's going to have to account for electrical, the electrical wires that run down Rogers. And I've had people for a long time say, man, it would be nice if we could bury those. I don't know if you're, I don't know if you're just on the water sewer side, but do you know anything about, and Carl's checking with RDOT about it, but... I've checked with OGNB on that, and they're looking into it. Okay. That would be great if, if we could bury those lines running down Rogers Avenue, those electrical lines running down Rogers Avenue. Do you have any input or know anything about that?
My only comment to that would be is we're all competing for that new space, right? If, if AOG's got gas lines in the right-of-way or near the right-of-way, we're, you know, we're competing with them for a spot to put our new stuff, so. And, I mean, I understand the, the concern about putting electric utilities underground, but if they're on a pole, then that frees up some underground space for everybody else.
Just from an aesthetic, I mean, this is a huge aesthetics thing, so I, I beg Eddie Lee, I, I mean, I think we need to, we need to try to push for that significantly.
Neil, anything else?
I just wanted to get that out there.
I, I agree with you. I think, I think if there's any way we could put it underground, to make that...
Well, and this is the perfect time. We're going to be digging holes in the ground anyway.
It's the only time, it's the only time to be able to.
Have the engineers work together and make it work. Okay, any questions on J? I need a motion to approve consenting gen items A through K.
I'd like to vote on G separately.
G separately, all right, we're going to pull G out as a separate vote, no problem with that. So let's go, we need a motion to approve items A through F and H through K.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, no other further questions? I ask the City Clerk to call the roll for those items.
Directors George Katsavas?
Yes.
Christina Katsavas?
Yes.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
Approved, six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, we're going to pull out item G for a separate vote. Any comments or questions on item 9G? With that, we'll ask the City Clerk to call the roll for the vote.
This on 9G?
9G. I would need a motion to approve item 9G.
Make a motion to approve 9G. Second.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Sherri. With that, we'll ask the City Clerk to call the roll.
Director, I'm sorry, Christina Katsavas?
No.
Settle?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Morton?
Yes.
George Katsavas?
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and one, I'm, I'm sorry, five in favor and one opposed.
Thank you very much, Sherri, appreciate all that work tonight. We'll go to the officials forum. Director Good, you got anything for the, for the team tonight?
No, thank you, Director.
Director Levon?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we, is this the appropriate time? Set aside November 22nd, all day for review of the budget. We need four to do that.
Well, one day budget, meaning?
Is that?
One day, not three? Okay. What day is that on?
November 22nd, it's Friday, I believe, right?
That's fine.
You, you need?
Four.
Four?
Four, for concurrence.
I'm good with that.
No, I'm good with it.
It's three.
I'm good, I'm good with it.
All right, there's your four. Okay. I think I'm good with it. I think I can make it. Friday the 22nd?
I mean, I would say Mondays are always better for me. Fridays are my busiest day, but if that's the only day we can do it, you know, would the following Monday work better for anybody, like the 25th?
That's fine with me.
Fridays usually works better for me, but, I mean...
I can, I can make either one work. I'll be flexible with the team, so on this one, whatever y'all would like to do. I know...
Either one's fine, it doesn't matter.
I know we don't have Jared here, so we...
Andre, what about you?
Yeah, I, I won't know until FedEx makes, you know, further announcements on operational needs.
That's his busy season.
Well, Friday, we'll do Friday, that's fine.
Do we want to put it on Friday? And if we decide to change it, we can talk about it next week or the week after?
No, let's just...
Mine's fine too. I'm good, I'm good with you on Monday, I'm fine with Monday too.
On Monday as well.
Let's do Monday.
It's tough, I can eat.
Okay, Monday it is.
On Monday.
There's a current from Monday to 25th.
Okay.
One, you got Levon?
Yes.
George?
Mm-hmm.
Myself, okay. Neil, you good on Monday?
I think I got outvoted, didn't I?
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Okay. Guess I got to be.
All right. Anything else, Levon?
I don't have anything else.
George?
Yeah. Carl, I, I was reviewing the financials for the Animal Haven, and there's some, and I would like to ask him to come in front of the board and answer some questions.
Sure.
You know, what caught my attention was the 2,500 for a computer, 1,600 for internet, you know, what kind of climate or heating are they going to have this winter for the dogs? And they have half a million dollars in savings, I want to know what the intention is with that.
Through there, okay.
Have them come?
Sure.
And one other thing for the board, say we get 10 more years on the consent decree, $800 million, that's $80 million a year. I don't, there's no way we're going to even come close to paying that. Is that true, Carl?
We do have...
Even with the rate increase, this is still going to be?
Well, it depends on the plan that was shown to the people who attended the rates meetings for the consent decree. The option was put forth to redirect part of the streets, bridges and associated drainage sales tax. And if three eighths of that were redirected, plus the three and a half percent rate increases, that would be sufficient through 2030.
Well, there's a substantial amount of debt financing that's in this.
There is, and the board would need to approve that.
And the advantage is we can pay it off over 30 years rather than 10 years, which is the way all municipal projects of any size are funded.
If we get the refinancing though, correct?
Well, but we, we've had discussions with bond counsel and they've had discussions with attorneys and underwriters, and they've basically said...
That's correct.
You know, if we pass the rate increases and we do the other things that we said we'd do to clean up our financial statements, that they thought they could sell bonds at four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent.
Which is a reasonable rate to borrow.
Are we in compliance with 110% bond coverage now?
Not yet.
Even with the increase?
Even with the increase, yeah.
Well, we don't know for sure because we haven't gotten the actuals since the increase. We won't know that till the end of October, right?
Well, we, you can, we can see.
We thought it was gonna be a dollar 90 a month average. I mean, everybody I've talked to, it's 100 to $500 increase. I mean, I think we'd be in compliance real quick with those numbers.
We, we lost three and a half million in water through August. And, uh, sewer had made a profit, but we were still basically break even. And we have to, we have to far exceed break even in order to pass that covenant.
Well, we, we, we knew that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've been saying the entire year we were gonna fail.
We say that this, we would, we would get to 110 with this rate increase in '25.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
But what I.
So in '24, in '24, we knew that. And that's the communication we're gonna.
And we, and I think we've told, we've told the bond agencies.
Well, what I'd like to know is the, the rate started in August, right? Correct? It was approved, it started in August, the rate increase?
Correct.
Yeah. I'd like to know what percentage increase since the rate increases compared to last year that we've increased revenue.
I think we've only gotten one pay cycle right now.
Yeah.
So, so I, I'm, I'm, I wanna see that.
You see what I'm saying?
I wanna see that same thing.
But when we see the September 30th financials, which I'm told will be next week sometime, split between water and sewer, that we will be able to see the impact of the rate increase on the month of September. And, and that'll be good information.
Yeah, that'd be good for all of us.
So, and I'm gonna back up a little bit and ask one question, Carl. This related. And that is, where are we on getting the Zoom meeting or face-to-face, whatever it is, with, uh, Justice and EPA on the consent decree proposal that we made?
We've been told that they're reviewing. They wanted a date and then they came back and said, no, not yet. They're, um, still reviewing.
Well, they gave us 30 days. I mean, they, you know, and they've had it, you know, in a couple of weeks, they'll have had it 30 days.
That's correct.
They should be, treat us fairly on that. My comment.
Anything else, George?
No, sir. I'm done. Thank you.
Director Christina Kit Savis?
Yeah, we haven't, um, heard anything from the F C R A recently, have we?
No, ma'am.
You know, I think we should move forward with proposing an end date for that to our state legislatures and see if they can ask the governor or whoever they need to ask if we can get an end date set. Because, you know, none of the beneficiaries have been able to accomplish that. I mean, it, it feels like a misnomer to even call us a beneficiary at this point because there's no benefit to us. But we need to get an end date set on this trust.
Are you, are you proposing a motion to put that on our future agenda?
Probably to provide direction that that be given to us.
I'm just providing direction.
Well.
I think, I'm sure.
I talked to Cindy Crawford. She says the legislator gave them a start date when they first started. He, she said they can provide an end date.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I've spoken with Representative Crawford as well.
And, and she's gonna, she's pushing that.
Okay, well, so, I mean, let me just say, let, let me propose an alternative. I, I think that, that we should ask our legislators as a group or individually, Carl should do this, to allow each beneficiary to name two trustee, two voting trustees to the board. That is not as dramatic as asking for an end date, but it would give each beneficiary, uh, and the beneficiaries as a group, a voice in which ha, what happens, which the big problem we have right now is we don't have a voice. And that would be a way without, because I, I mean, I honestly think that it's unlikely that they would approve an end date with all the unknown things there are. But I think that there's a possibility, in my view, that they would agree to give each one of us representation. I mean, it would seem only reasonable at that, at this point. I don't see how they could say that's not reasonable. And then we could, as a group or individually, and it's, you know, sometimes the four of us agree, sometimes we don't, work toward, uh, a, a reasonable resolution without having a crisis end date. Because that's the concern I have about an end date. As you get close to it, a lot of complications occur. And if you had representation on the board, then you could talk through those things in, kind of in the normal course of, of business.
Well, I would say to push back on that a bit. I think if we were dealing with reasonable people, that would be fine. I think we've made very reasonable requests and, um, we've never gotten anywhere with it. And, you know, we've met. I'm a bit dramatic. I'm, I'm fine with a dramatic ask. Let's wind this thing down and know. They need to know what they're working towards because they're saying, what are they saying? It could be three years, it could be 10 years?
Well, I think eight would be, eight would be a voting majority.
Oh, yeah.
So if the eight.
But then they cancel their meetings or they have meetings with no public discussion.
And the eight could have some rights. That's, I'm just saying, it's, it's a step process to get.
They're not going to give up any power. They're not going to give any benefit to the beneficiaries. You know, I mean, maybe, maybe we try that. But I would also like to look into speaking with our state legislatures and see how they feel about setting an end date. I mean, they, you know, there was no problem setting a start date. So I think, um, you know, it's not quite as dramatic as what Director George Kit Savis has proposed with cutting off their water. You know, I. Also too, I'm interested in their financials. I'd like to know who's on their payroll. So how do we get that information? I wanna know contractors. I wanna know who's doing work for them. I wanna know where the money's going. Do we need to file a FOIA for that? Or is that something that should be provided to us because we're beneficiary?
I would think it would be provided for us since we are beneficiaries. And if there's any issue, which I don't think there would be, I'll inform the board.
Okay. I'd like to know who is on their payroll, including contractors, anyone they may, services they may hire. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Director Martin?
Yeah, um, one of the things that we've been hearing a lot about over the last week or so is related to Denali Water Solutions, who has been performing, uh, work over in Crawford County and emitting a stench across all of Fort Smith. All of Fort Smith. I've gotten, I've seen so many communications about it. I have, people have reached out to me directly about it. I know we're frustrated. I know these, these people are frustrated. And I know there's a suit that's, um, that's being.
Filed.
That's been filed. That's being levied, a private suit. But what, what can we do as a city to be able to prevent that from happening again? We would need to ask our city attorney.
Jurisdiction basis, um, the city is fairly limited. Seems to me the most logical approach is to approach the state agency, which issues the permits for the operations, to modify those permits to avoid a, almost an annual very difficult situation on all of us. Other than that, since it's not within our jurisdiction, you could hopefully fashion some sort of a public nuisance lawsuit. And I haven't seen the suit that's been filed, but I assume it's of that nature. So you, from a civil remedy, nuisance theory is available. It's a difficult cause of action, but it's available. And other than that, since it's not within our jurisdiction, you would call upon the governmental entities that have jurisdiction to solve the problem.
That'd be the state of Arkansas.
Yes.
So this is, you know, we just made a mention about our state legislature. I think we reach out to Senator Boyd. Well, I'm not gonna name all. We reach out to every one of them and see what they can do this legislative session to be able to prevent that. And, you know, what was really frustrating to me is the Peacemaker Festival happened not last weekend, but the weekend prior. And they moved the Peacemaker from a hot part of the month to a significantly cooler part of the month, specifically for this. And what happens? That smell is permeating. One of the, one of the, you know, the nicer, uh, festivals in, especially in our area, but something that's bringing a lot of people to town. It's been very successful over the last 10 years. And I've, I'm very frustrating, I'm, I'm very frustrated that that's what they had to deal with. And then our, our citizens had to deal with that, um, you know, for, for a week. And I even, I feel like it's still happening.
It's still happening.
Yeah, it's still happening, yeah. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're on a week and a half nearing two weeks of this. That's unacceptable. And regardless of what we do, I think we need Denali Water Solutions right there as soon as possible to speak to this board.
I'd like to make, if you wouldn't make a motion to have them here next week, I'd do, I'd do something.
I make a motion to have Denali Water Solutions here next week to address this board and provide some answers as to why we, 90,000 of us, are having to deal with this consistently. When they said they were shutting it down, if I'm right.
They did.
They did in 2019. So I think it's time that they, uh, that they confronted this board and we got a chance to ask some questions.
I'll reach out to their general manager and their communications person tomorrow.
Thank you. I can't, I can't second, so I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. You know, it sounds like maybe we might need a field trip to Little Rock to.
Yeah, yeah.
Speak with our legislatures and, you know.
Well, we, we, I know the AML conference is coming, um, not too long.
Should we invite our legislators to be here next week?
I, if, if they can, if Denali will be here, let's invite our legislators, legislators here as well.
Yeah, but Director Martin, they're, they're, they're in a lawsuit. Do you think they would come talk?
We'll see.
No harm in asking.
Well, and, and I have a follow-on question, you know, and, and this is, uh, for next week, if they come or even if they don't, something to investigate. That is, you know, the state of Missouri passed a law that prohibited them from, from spreading their materials in the state of Missouri. Well, that material's going somewhere.
Yeah.
Is it coming here?
To us.
Is it coming here to us? Because there, there was a story in Talk Business and Politics, I believe, or in the newspaper about the fact that, that certain, certain pits, well, no, I was told this by a citizen who did some, made some calls to A D Q, that they filled up some new, uh, uh, places, new storage locations and almost, almost run out of space. And that makes me think they're getting more quantities than they used to, which opens up this Missouri question. Because I have a feeling that they took the materials from Northwest Arkansas, which there's a lot of, up to Missouri. And now they have, maybe they're coming down here, but.
So, so you're, you're saying they took, what was it, Northwest Arkansas to Missouri? Now that Missouri passed that law.
I'm saying, it's a question we need to ask. It's gotta go somewhere. Is it coming here?
Bringing it from Northwest Arkansas to here.
Yeah, is it coming here? And should Arkansas allow that?
Right.
How does Crawford County feel about this? Has anyone heard from the mayor or the port there?
I've reached out to.
Let's invite them too.
I've reached out to Mayor Hearst and gave him the information that Sherri was able to provide.
Yeah, invite, invite everybody.
This, this is, this is really frustrating and unacceptable for, for us.
I'll reach out to the county judge.
Okay. Second item that I've got is, you know, back in the summertime, I think Director George Kit Savis had gone out to Animal Haven and there was a question about heat for, for animals. And I, you know, they were looking at some different options, or excuse me, air conditioning for animals. They were looking at some, some different options and, um, trying to work towards maybe a new facility. I mean, there was all this, there's all, all kinds of talk. Now that we're in October and we're getting ready for, uh, the cold weather, has anything been done about climate control in that facility? So now, is there anything related to heat in that facility that will give some of the animals relief in the cold months of the year?
That's why I want them to come to the board and talk to us.
Is that what, is that what Director Kit Savis is for?
Yeah, I want them to come and answer questions.
Okay. Because I'm not under, I'm not of, of the belief that there is anything that's been done. And we had time, we had time. So I'd, I'd like them to, to answer that. So if that's what, if that's what.
Yeah, that's what I wanna, there's, yeah.
Okay.
So we can all ask them questions.
Yeah, and, and I think that's fine. I will say this. We're paying a lot of money for the animal shelter.
Million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm. And the, the goal of the spay and neuter is to reduce that cost over time. And I will say, as a citizen, that cost has to be reduced over time, no matter where the animal shelter is. We cannot continue to pay the level of money that we're paying for that service. Uh, and I'm not in favor of a palace for the dogs. You know, I grew up in the country. We didn't have air conditioning in our house, much less for the dogs. So I don't, I don't get this, this heat thing. I've been out there in the summer and it's hot, but it's a lot better to be inside a building, um, than it is out in the blazing sun. So I don't, I don't get that. And I also believe that, you know, they should, we should ask the questions on heat and they need some source of heat to keep the temperature reasonable.
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 That's what I'm asking for, reasonable.
Dogs have a much wider range of comfort than people do. That's a fact. I grew up with dogs.
Right, well, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for reasonableness. And I don't feel like.
That's fair.
I, I didn't get any reasonableness in the summer. And we talked about it. We communicated with them. Have they made any progress towards any of that stuff?
Well, I, you know, I'd like to have, I'd like to know information about the, the dog, the animal shelters in Northwest Arkansas and maybe in Little Rock, North Little Rock, Conway. What are they doing and how much are they spending?
Well, yeah, do they have, do they have beds? Do they have things like that that keeps them off the concrete?
Yeah, yeah. Do they keep the temperature 72 inside their animal shelters?
Probably not.
Well, we'll find out.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I just wanna, are we, are we doing something to make sure that we're, we're, is Animal Haven doing the things they need to do in order to?
Well, and we pay 90, 90 or 95% of the cost of that. So every time we suggest something and they go out and do it, we're paying for it. Everybody needs to remember that. And that will be true wherever that animal shelter is. And we cannot pay a million dollars a year forever.
Well, and, and I would, I would 100% agree with that. We're kinda at a, at a point where there, I, I didn't look at the financials. It came via email. I didn't look at it yet, but I've heard people tell me they're sitting on a half a million dollars. Let's put some of that to work, uh, whether it's transport animals out, whether it's adopt them out, whether it's to provide some heat for the ones that are there. You know, there's, I think there's a lot of things that we can do. So I'm ready to, I, I, I wanna hear them be able to communicate on something.
Well, I think those are fair points. And I, and, you know, we, we've fallen behind in getting reports on adoptions and, and transports. I haven't seen any of that in three months or so, and, and that's important.
Yep.
I think for what they have spent on transports, they should have transported about 300 to 400 animals for August.
Oh, well, that would be good.
The, the last thing that I have, I just wanted, wanted to make sure, uh, we, I think we've talked about it tonight. Director Rego brought it up last week. We're discussing commercial and irrigation water meter, water meter rates November 12th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Well, that's another billing cycle gone by.
Well, if, if, if we don't talk about it.
Next week.
Next week. We don't talk about it.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I only got a couple of things. Tonight, we did see our new fire truck was here. Fire Truck Three did arrive. I think it took, Fire Chief, that took two, three years to get here?
Took over two years.
Two years to get here. When that used to take nine months. So grateful to have that for Fire Station Three, which is on the north side of town. So it's great to have a new ladder truck for the city. The last thing is, we're, certainly, speaking of Denali, um, what bothers me the most about this is, what are they doing, what process are they doing, because it's so close to the river. It is so close to the river, it begs the question, what are they doing? So, I hope they come next week and answer the question, because my question's gonna be about their process, because kinda, kinda funny that we're held to a standard and maybe companies are not.
That's a good question, good question.
That's all I'm gonna say, so with that, uh, we are gonna reconvene, uh, or to the city administration, do you have anything before we reconvene?
Not at all, thank you.
Okay, the board's gonna reconvene for appointments to executive sessions, for appointments for the building, Board of Adjustments, Appeals, Future Fort Smith Committee, and the National League of Cities Voting Delegations, we'll be back in a few minutes, thank you. The board is reconvening for the appointments from, uh, tonight, the board will be appointing Chip Johnson to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the board will be voting Richard Hanley, the Future Fort Smith Committee, and there will be no delegate from the City of Fort Smith at the National League of Cities in Tampa. To have a motion to approve said.
So moved.
Second.
Before you adjourn.
First, two adjourned.
Wait, 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 all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, uh, city minister?
Yes, uh, there is an issue with having the budget meeting on the twenty-fifth, there are department heads that are, that will not be here, so.
Twenty-second's fine, can we make it work?
Can we move it back to the twenty-second?
Motion to.
Friday.
Motion to move it back to the twenty-second.
Yeah, I need four.
I'm good with that, Lavon, you good with twenty-second?
Yeah, I'm, I, I, that's okay with me, yeah.
We can do this in one day.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Remember, last year was because of my cancer surgery.
Okay, all right, we'll go move to twenty-second, all right.
Four.
All right, any other discussion, motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.